Oh. Good evening, all. For the meeting of the School Building Committee Finance Subcommittee, a special meeting on March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three is the order. First order of business. Communications.
I love it.
I had some emails from our chair. And we clarified that we were proceeding with this meeting. We regret that Justin did not be with us, but he's going to follow up with us. Also, we're close to the other subcommittees very well outside committee time. Will add a communication of my own now, and as I felt it was important to have this meeting immediately after the referendum. Where the Finance Subcommittee based on results of the referendum, I thought it important that we be ready and understand where the committee is financially with its internal and external obligations. So my schedule is on a Friday evening, and I apologize for that. It's just difficult with the CIP meeting Thursday, it's like a meeting on Monday, and my work travel schedule. So I I can apologize to everyone for Friday evening meeting. In our last full meeting of School Building Committee, the committee requested that we be ready to update on where we were fiscally, so we are going to go through that tonight, and maybe somewhat boring and tedious, but I appreciate you all being here. With that said, old business. The agenda item is approval of minutes, and I can't find our minutes for the last meeting.
If I may point out, the subcommittee can't prove their minutes anyway.
Okay.
You can have a consensus that they're correct or edit them, but only the committee can approve. The School Building Committee is, you can't take any action, actually. But but you can bring recommendations and whatever else.
I thought the exact opposite. I thought if I didn't do that, I'd be not.
No, that that was something we learned early on with the land subcommittee. We were originally approving our minutes, and then we were instructed. Yes, we did earlier with the land committee too, and then we're instructed that only the main committee
Okay.
can do that.
Note for myself. So where where are they kept? Because I was, I found most of them in my emails, but is there, I was looking on our site, and I was trying to find. I found our regular minutes, but where are the subcommittee minutes?
Where do you, where have you been sending them to after you have a meeting?
Justin always does know.
They're filed the same way as every other set of town meeting minutes in the town clerk.
So the process.
Are you going to find them all in there?
They're in the School Building Committee.
If the town clerk filed them, yes.
If they were, they are meeting minutes of subcommittees of the School Building thing. So yeah, they'd be under School Building Committee.
That's where I looked in our in our areas.
They may not have been filed.
So, yeah, so Justin may not know the right place to be sending them to, so Justin.
I thought Kelsey was doing it. That's what I thought.
Now, Justin should be sending them to the main committee. The committee should approve them.
I remember doing that.
And then we should make sure.
Approving our.
When was your last meeting?
It was February fourth, I think.
Don't get it on here.
We'll we'll find out. Thank you, though, for explaining the policy.
Just look and see if they've been approved by the main meeting, and that will need to get done. If they have been approved already, then we have to just see where they are and send them. We'll send them to the town clerk. So we can discuss this on Wednesday.
I remember. They can't be approved by the main meeting until they're.
I understand. Yes, yes.
Most of our discussion was in the last meeting was centered around the spreadsheet that Ralph had prepared for our committee. Sure, we meant to work like that, but we'll find them. Thank you both. Present to speak. Mr. Tell.
I tell forty-nine, so obviously there's a lot to unwind and digest and everything. Coming to the CIP meeting yesterday. Some concerns of it appears that the voters will still vote to send and bond money of a million dollars or whatever that you want. However, that's tagged. The SBC may go through a town meeting vote. I just I'm concerned that it's going to be set aside for the SBC when the SBC has already fulfilled its charge. Now, I understand the SBC could change its charge and such like that. I personally and others I talked to like to see the SBC dissolved and then stood up again if that's the path going to go forward. With, I know there's been other people suggesting, why don't we develop a a facilities board instead of hiring somebody, set up a board where they can handle something like this going forward. And maybe allocate, you know, just throwing numbers out there, fifty thousand dollars to them. And let them do the funding instead of what's going to probably happen to backdoor facilities manager on this. So I just have concerns with some money that might be coming to the SBC that probably should stay in the CIP's area and let the voters send that money from the CIP to the Board of Education, whoever it may be, to fill that and let the SBC dissolve. That's all I have now. Probably a lot there.
That's fine. We appreciate any feedback. Anyone else present to speak? Okay. New business. Referendum results. We will have a full discussion of that at our full committee meeting. I only want to acknowledge the results, which was a negative referendum on the project proposed. And then go into our task of looking at where we are fiscally, what financial commitments we have outstanding, and recognizing that it's important that we terminate all expenses associated with this project, given the results of the referendum. I also think it's important that we make every effort. If there's any funds remaining in our budget, that we return back to the town. I think our full committee has always been very emphatic that that would always be the case. But I think this is a good time to recognize that now and show good faith with the community. So with that said, I'll move to be Colliers project team leaders. And I I put this on the agenda. I'm also concerned that we be able to discuss things and have it on the agenda, otherwise we couldn't discuss them. But in terms of where we are budgetarily as a School Building Committee, my understanding, Ralph, jump in here. Their contract with us was up to the point of referendum. And as such, and I remember Scott at our last SBC meeting saying, good luck, and I'm done. So I'm going to make the assumption that that is the case, and he has fulfilled his contract. We will be billed for the balance, which will review what we get to the expenditures report that I have tonight from the Finance Office. But I just want to acknowledge that he is complete with his contract. He was our consultant to this project. To bring us to referendum, and there are no remaining tasks. And from my point of view, as as the Finance Subcommittee, no remaining financial commitments beyond taking us to referendum, which is not complete.
May I help provide some information for that?
Certainly. To the point that the intent was he would get us to referendum, that is certainly true, but officially, contractually, there is nothing that says that. The goal of the break between pre-referendum and post-referendum was that anything, any contracts we signed post-referendum would potentially be eligible for reimbursement. That's the key to making the break at the referendum, but since the referendum was not positive, there's no means to apply for reimbursement, of course. So there is no starting of new contracts necessarily, or at least not starting new contracts that would apply to reimbursement or to the new construction because it wasn't approved. The contract with Colliers does not automatically sunset or contractually sunset. It was just our goal to sunset it. If the referendum was positive, because we would stop spending money that would not be potentially reimbursable.
Reimbursable with respect to grants.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on the term reimbursable, that's all.
Yes, because the contract was signed with Colliers previous to the referendum. It was not eligible to be added to the application to the.
That was always my understanding.
Yep, correct, but it did not, the contract is not written that it has to stop at the referendum.
I've done perhaps Ralph, I misunderstood Scott's eye when he said, this is my last meeting.
I think his assumption was there would be a positive referendum, and then we would be issuing a new contract for owner's project manager, and we wouldn't know who that would be.
Could have been his firm.
It could have been his firm again or.
Another firm.
Right.
But he would not have continued beyond the referendum.
Well, if it was a positive referendum, he would not, because we'd want to protect the right to get reimbursement.
Right, because every petty will be forward. I understand.
Right.
So.
So again, because we can't make decisions here tonight in subcommittee, I think it's very good to be talking about it, but this is really something we're going to have to wrestle with in the full committee next week.
Well, just so that we have an understanding.
Right.
Where things are at. I was under the impression post-referendum. Scott was out of the picture.
Well, as I've already explained, but how I understand it is.
I'm a little bit confused now, Ralph. So he completed his his task, but technically, there's nothing in the contract that sunsets.
No, the contract is limited by by scope and by dollars. And there is still roughly, I don't know, you guys can report, there's roughly eleven thousand dollars.
We have that. He's going to bill that out.
No, 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 not necessarily. No, if we don't use him, he won't. Well, all right. If he has any remaining bill he owes us, obviously, he'll send it to us because we may owe him for work that's been done in the last week.
We do prior to.
Right, right, prior to referendum. If we don't engage him anymore, we will not bill against the remaining amount.
Okay, so there may be funds remaining.
There may be funds remaining that are currently encumbered because they're tied to that contract. It'll be a matter for the full committee to talk about if there is a what's next, and if if he needs to be involved.
To just press you into service, Mike, as a member of the committee. Looks like you sort of is.
Committee chair, I, yeah.
Okay. That's somewhat clear. We'll come back to this when we get to expenditures for for everyone that's not looking at the agenda. We'll move through all the encumbrances and 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 come back to Colliers, but we'll go to C now. This may be a similar experience. SBC RFPs. So I did get a communication from Mike. Actually, I should have mentioned on the communication that the the architect RFP was withdrawn, and that was on town website.
The OPM solicitation and the architect's solicitation were both resolved. The OPM solicitation had gone further. We had received the OPM solicitation had already expired because it had gone past its closing date, and we had received proposals. But because of the negative referendum, we're not moving forward, and we contacted all of the companies. Regardless, for the purposes of this meeting, there are no RFPs in play. There's no commitment to anybody.
No.
And and they've been pulled offline.
Do we have, you know, some sort of documentation that that did we like send an email to?
We didn't sign any contracts, so we have no financial commitment. Right. So.
Yeah, the only cancellation I saw online was the video.
Right, because the other one was already over.
That explains that.
And that was updated on the state websites as well.
Did anyone contact us, asking any questions about it?
That's a matter for the full meeting. We'll all go over all the communications in the full meeting.
As long as our funds were expended, I suppose it's fine. I indeed legal expenses, and this is in the expenditures report that we'll we'll get to shortly, but Ralph, I I recall in our full meetings that we put ten thousand dollars in CIP to be available post-referendum to cover legal expenses.
It's not there. There's nothing in CIP.
Was it the source of the funding?
That's the source of funding.
Anything is within our, within your.
Donna said to me, but I I could have sworn, did we like tell CIP to meet and actually.
It was last year.
Not for not for legal.
We talked about it last year, but it's in the budget.
Okay, so that's strictly our budget. Okay, then we'll come to that in expenditures. And that's why I put CIP on here for E, because I wasn't sure what, if any, funds we have earmarked in CIP for post-referendum, had there been a positive referendum. That's what I wanted to be sure of.
May I comment on that? Are you at a, are you at that point?
We are at that point.
Okay. Previous to the referendum, there were two lines in CIP. One was showing the outgoing years of the major bonding. The other one was showing two hundred thousand dollars in the July one starting fiscal year, fiscal twenty-four, which was also essentially for fees and financing and some contingencies.
Your first note.
Right.
I think I sort of understood.
Right, so there was, so that was what was going to be funded out of town budget.
Right.
Was the two hundred, the two and a half million was in fund anticipation. No, so that was financed as opposed to being out of budget money. Those were the two items. That was changed at the CIP meeting last night. And there was also discussion in the CIP about putting a million dollar buffer to try to help with the peak of the taxes if it got approved, to try to chop off somebody as like a shock absorber in the budget. What came out of the CIP meeting last night was those two previous lines.
The bond fees.
The bond fees, and then the two hundred thousand were essentially removed.
That's how I understood it, but I just wanted to acknowledge that tonight.
And were replaced with the one million dollars still, and I don't remember what language was settled on. It was debated for a long time what the language would be of how that money was.
If if I'm, so the language that was determined, it was a motion that I made, was kind of a combination. The SBC has not met, the Board of Ed has not had a discussion. We don't know what direction we will go in, and so it was one, one million dollars for SBC funds or school building projects. So all of that would have to be determined, would have to be justified, and a request would have to come out of either the SBC or the Board of Ed, go before the Board of Finance, go before a town meeting. If the Board of Selectment accept that change from CIP, and it goes to town meeting. So there's there's other steps there. CIP was simply the first step.
There's about six steps of approval for any of that money to be able to get expended.
Am I correct in assuming then after CIP last night that those adjustments are not yet in the plan and will be?
They are in the CIP plan. They're in their recommended CIP plan to the Board of Selectmen. That's the Board of Selectmen's plan. CIP is an advisory advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen. We have approved a plan. Those changes are not in it. So at Monday night's meeting, those will be discussed by the Board of Selectmen. If at that time we we take action to accept that, then we would need to, it was not in, that total amount was not in the budget packet that is going before budget hearing.
Right.
It would be a discussion that would come up at the budget hearing, and if the board, after discussions at that hearing of the public, chose to make additional appropriations, that would be the time.
Yeah, because I saw the budget.
Yeah.
The package for.
Right, and it's not, it's not in there, right? So that that was already completed. Those appropriations were done last week.
So that adjustment still needs to be made.
If 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 out of discussions of these multiple levels.
Right.
The Board of Finance chooses to make that addition.
Okay, understood.
Yes.
That's how I understood it, because at the end of the CIP meeting, I I want to get a copy of the updated CIP plan, but it wasn't updated yet. The next, I'd wait till after Monday.
Because the Board of Selectmen will approve a plan to bring to the Board of Finance.
Still needs a couple of steps to understand.
But in in the in that revised in that revised CIP plan, the funds for the bonding
Were removed.
were were removed.
Yes, my motion included.
That was my main concern, and it was hard to separate that from all the other things that were being discussed.
So it takes it out of play right now for anything for the SBC or for the subcommittee, because we don't, there is no, plus, we're not at July first anyway.
Right, so my motion removes all of those very specific dollar amounts for bonding, because we won't be sending an application by June thirty, so we won't be moving into any kind of construction phase in the next year. So it was adding a million dollars each of the five years. The only one that is real fund, real committed within the budget this year would potentially be that first million dollars.
Oh, I think I understood that. We're not the CIP, so I I I I'm not going to discuss that here. I just wanted to be sure that any potential bonding money, notes money, fees money is out, and and that is. How the CIP manages the rest of it was very interesting, but that's not in our purview. So, okay, we can finally do what I want to do, which is to go to the
I saw a memo.
Who would like my two copies?
Thank you.
Sorry?
I said I've seen it.
Oh, okay. I'm sure. Instructive at the top is this committee's budget, which is the two hundred thousand dollars. We received that in separate town meetings along the way. And we can see at the line at the top that we've expended one hundred and ten thousand, two sixty-one.
One hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-two hours and sixteen and six.
I do you be corrected.
When you sit next to an engineer.
Typically the case.
So. Encumbered thirty-seven thousand, six eighty-nine, eighty-four.
And leaving a a balance of two thousand, forty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. For those like me who are not accounting people, so the expended is what we've actually paid, paid invoices. And the encumbrance is what we're anticipating to pay.
But as Mike previously said, what's encumbered for Colliers may not be built out. Am I correct?
I would have to look. I know that January and February are already through that process. I don't know if we, I believe we have not been built for March, because today is the last day of March.
So there may be funds.
There may, there may still be. That's the value of having it encumbered.
No, understood, understood. And we see that detail, Ralph.
Definitely.
Page two says Colliers project leaders professional services contract amount. So it it looks like we're anticipating or our finance office is anticipating a little sixty-four thousand, eight hundred.
Now, that's the total.
There's total contract.
It's a total contract.
What they're anticipating is the thirteen thousand, eight sixty-five.
That's what's unspent.
Oh, okay.
That's unspent. We don't know. Contract will remain from that until we get final billing.
The billing and decide if we're using anymore. The billing may not use up all of that.
No.
It may be less, it's, I'm sure it's less than that.
I would expect it.
Yeah, yeah.
We have all the Colliers invoices kind of detailed out on the first page.
Right, and the last one, I believe, was for the month of February, so probably processed sometime in early March, mid-March.
So it's possible to get loud, Ralph. That this thirteen thousand is the remaining billing of the up to referendum. And and then we're complete with Colliers, no?
I don't think it'll be that.
Before, that is because they may not bill out thirteen thousand.
That's the maximum of the contract.
Maximum they can bill up.
It's not a lump sum where you completed this task. It's it's per hours worked, the meeting.
It's billable. It's billable against the contract based on work done.
Yep, there's that, and there's the reimbursable expenses.
Right, which are billable against the contract, right? It's a separate line. I don't.
It it shows up there.
Yeah, I think it's a separate line on the second one, because I think we asked them.
It's separate on the invoices that separated out.
Yeah. Because one was the contract that started at like sixty-four.
Right, which is professional services.
During that course, we'd asked them to do something.
Reimbursements are, I think reimburseables are a separate line from professional services, yeah.
So we were just anticipating this final billing, and then we'll divulge any small surplus.
Where are we with Eagle, like?
I just circled that, Ralph. I'm I'm looking at Eagle. I would expect, I would expect a little bit more at the end of March. But the last I heard from them was we are still within the contract.
Okay, are they essentially done or are we still waiting?
I believe so.
Did we get a final report?
It's forthcoming.
So the amount this report is showing encumbered for Eagle is seventy-nine nineteen.
The last bill was March sixth, just not sure what that encompasses.
That we approved twenty-seven.
Contract value is twenty-seven, five, twenty-five. We we can see that we we paid out four, seven, eight, like nine grand-ish. And then we have this additional
I don't expect much to come back there.
Because both of those.
The the amount of work done in March was less than in previous than like in February, so I would assume the bill was smaller, but I don't, I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, but I mean, just looking at just adding up their invoices versus what was approved. We don't think there's a lot.
But I also heard from them, we were still within our contract, so that's all I can tell you.
Right.
And the Halloran and Sage.
There was just, there was a lot of
So so that's what I.
I know there was a set aside of town, yes.
Yes, and and now now it's ninety-three, eighty-nine encumbered. How, we we approved ten thousand dollars, but did we go through that?
I I thought. No, encumbered means that that's the amount of the contract that you haven't used yet. That's like remaining balance in the contract.
I understand, but it almost sounds like we're anticipating that expense and no.
We put money aside in the event, that's how much we can spend.
And that's right.
You should see an invoice in there. Also, the last Halloran and Sage invoice that you have is the last one I got.
Like your credit card, they say you got five thousand dollars. Spent three thousand, I mean, you still got two thousand.
Right, so they're going to charge you an interest.
Well, yeah.
So only five thousand before you know it.
How many, two thousand dollars? First page. Go to the second page.
I am on the second page.
Pardon?
Up at the top.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay. All those are small, very small ones.
Very small items.
Very small items. It's like a thousand dollars between the three.
It's thirteen thousand.
What I'm trying to understand is the. The draft letter of intent for four thousand, that was approved, for showing nineteen fifteen encumbered. So that means we already paid for the first half of the.
Everything has a P O number, Peter. The encumbrance has a P O number, there's P O numbers against the expenditures, you can see what was paid off of each P O number.
I understand. Also, we did pay that, okay. Why isn't it then in the expended column?
I think we, I think we started with. Halloran and Sage with money previous to the ten thousand, right?
Right, the committee had very specific items, and then we put aside legal or legal expenses of the course of a project.
So if you look, you may see expenses, I, I don't, I don't know, because it's too hard for me to read it on my phone, I don't have it in front of me, but. You're gonna see expenses previous to the ten thousand being set aside, so the overall Halloran Sage budget was more than ten thousand.
And you can see their dollar.
Because we were using them previously.
Cause we're using them previous.
Now it's coming directly out of our budget.
Right.
Well, they were all coming directly out of our budget, the first one was for four thousand dollars. We've spent all but one thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and twenty six cents of that four thousand dollars. Because that was for a very specific person, purpose, so if the next billing. Did not fit under that particular item, it was then deducted from the ten thousand dollar general legal. And that's why of that ten thousand, we spent all but nine thousand, three hundred eighty nine dollars and fifty cents.
So in large and grander terms, we had fourteen thousand dollars total set aside, and we've used about twenty six hundred dollars of it. Of the fourteen thousand.
Because we anticipated using that ten thousand post positive referendum.
Potential.
It's for a course of a project, which.
I get thirty four hundred seventy two.
Uh, maybe I did the math quickly in my head, which may be suspect.
So. So we think we have a potential balance of fifty two thousand nine, fifty thousand, fifty thousand zero, or is that more? Say fifty two K.
We have a pretty reliable finance department, so we're gonna assume those numbers are correct, yes.
We have fifty two thousand dollars that is not earmarked for anything, the SBC did not allocate for any. Fifty two thousand dollars. Fifty two, forty seven, fifty five.
The only question I have, aside from the encumbrance details that were shown, which are helpful. Are there any other costs we're anticipating, and I'm thinking of two, just scrolling through all of Mike's emails. I saw there was a lot of communication with the, uh. Payment schedules and so forth being prepared by the bond counsel. Are we gonna be billed for that, do you have a purchase order for it right now?
I don't see anything. Okay, so then it would have to go to the main committee first and approve that. To, to prove to engage in that, and then. That would give us the opportunity to direct the finance department to create a purchase order number, so it would show up, so right now. There is nothing approved by the committee, so that work with the bond counsel is being paid for somewhere else, not out of. This, the money that you're looking at right now, not that that couldn't change, I'm just saying, right now it has.
Against the SBC, yeah. In simple terms.
It has nothing, right now it has nothing to do with the SBC, the SBC has authorized any spending expenditures.
Into the bucket where the town was paying the fees and so forth.
I don't know, because it's not SBC.
Stop right there.
Stop worrying, yes.
Okay, well, um, that, that's good news, because that means that, um. We, we were frugal with our budget, we accomplished everything we needed to accomplish, and I, I think that's, uh. A positive for our larger committee and for this subcommittee to recognize.
And to what you were discussing before, there is the potential these encumbrance don't all get spent. Like, we may not need Halloran Sage for that whole fourteen thousand dollars, right?
Uh, say, I, I, I got the year and there's eleven thousand dollars left, or.
Right, um, so it's possible those could, we could relieve some of the encumbered funds.
Well, I'm going to enter into the subjective realm here, and, uh. Say that I, I think it would be. A positive recommendation for our committee to make, Ralph, and I, like that here, it says this on it, to recommend to the full committee that we. As we always said, return these funds to the town. I don't know what our future is as a committee, able to decide that, I'm sure, um, next week. Uh, but we don't pay for a secretary, correct, Erica, so?
Yes, you do.
We do? We pay in gross, do you?
No, we pay a recording secretary.
Oh, okay. So we actually.
Well, it, it, it hits a payroll, so, no, it's in the selectmen's budget. It's in an item within my budget, it's not within these documents, we pay for it, but it's, it's in the selectmen's budget.
Okay.
Oh, that's very kind of you. So there's another one, another one you don't have to worry about.
Well, my, my, my point is that, um, I think we can deliberate as a committee and not spend money. There's no project to spend money on, we don't need to spend money on ourselves. Um, therefore, I, I think, and I'd like to recommend, um, in our report to the committee, that we. Return these funds to the town, and that could be an open item of discussion at our meeting, but, uh, I, I think that would be the right thing to do, and it. It was something we, we said, because I'll just remind everyone that. The town wasn't forthcoming and providing us the first hundred thousand dollars, and. There, there was more anxiety, you know, with the town about the second, and. I think we consistently said we would use the funds for what we needed to use them for, and if there was any excess, we would return them. And I, I, I'd like us, as a full committee, make, to do that, I don't think the full committee will decide, but I certainly hope that's. The path we take.
To that, Pete, what, what I'd like to. Add to that is, we're kind of in Never Never Land at the moment, knowing where things are going. So I would hesitate. To, to make a hard recommendation to freeze those funds at this point until we get past a meeting on Wednesday. After post, or selectmen's meeting, uh, I don't know if it's on your agenda, I didn't look closely at the agenda for Monday. What's the next step?
Uh, what? SBC is not on this.
No, it'll come out Monday.
So, I, I mean, I think it makes sense to consider that, but we're not, we're ready to. Commit to returning all those funds, um. I wanna take a wait and see attitude, because I wanna see where this goes. And obviously, we have, um, some things to discuss on Wednesday.
It's all good discussion stuff for one, for the main meeting.
Very good, um, I was forward to that discussion. The full meeting, uh, item G. I put future SBC expenses, I think we could have jumped into that. I don't think, I can think of any, um, in, uh, uh, the recording secretary. Or just covering that, in, in the town's selectman budgets, that's good, um. But I think we're okay there.
And I have nothing for other.
Nor I. Um, and that brings us to good and welfare.
I'll go to you, Ralph, can I borrow a Peter?
Mr. Do Not. I'm good, are you on welfare?
Perhaps who? I'll entertain the motion to adjourn, uh, someone?
All in favor?
Aye.
Needing to adjourn to that, seven thirty eight, is that?
Thank you all.
Nicely done.